Item number D, receive report on development of a policy for maintenance and use of general fund and equipment replacement reserves and fiscal year 2010-11 budget preparation. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's two parts to this report and I am going to ask the finance director to begin with the report on the proposed reserve policies and then I will complete the report with the update on the budget preparation process.
So I want to talk about the development of the reserve policy. Back in February at a study session and then at a regular city council meeting, staff discussed with the city council revenue shortfalls for the current year and strategies for addressing that. As part of the conversation, the city council requested that the staff developed and recommended policy on the use of both the general fund reserves and also the equipment replacement The general fund reserves really serves a couple of purposes. They really fulfill primarily a working capital need. That is to say, there are some cyclical elements in terms of our revenue streams and having a reserve that provides working capital really allows us to cover the cash flow needs. So for instance, we talked a little bit about property taxes. We get primarily two payments of property taxes, that being in December and April. And so those revenues obviously are a very substantial piece of the revenue stream for the city and whereas the expenditures, for most part, such as salaries, are a fixed cost that are recurring. So the reserve provides for the working capital need for that. It also provides protection for any type of disaster and also helps the city protect its creditworthiness. Rating agencies, for instance, will look at the balance sheet of a city and an agency and see where they are in terms of assets and/or fund balances, which includes reserves. And having a reserves is important in the eyes of these credit agencies such as S and P. It's especially important if we were to go out to the bond market and issue debts as relates, for instance, to redevelopment. In looking at the thought of developing this reserve policy, a number of different elements need to be considered and some of those we point out as part of the attachment A, which talks about what is the correct amount that is appropriate. Part of managing reserves is really controlling risks. How much risk is an agency willing to take in moderating or controlling or minimizing the risk? Other consideration is, you know, what is the appropriate level of these reserve balances? And in looking at the various elements there, as I indicated, one of them is cash flow. The other one is expenditures and, you know, what part of our expenditures have some degree of flexibility versus not. And I would submit that in most cases, cities have pretty fixed expenditures. That is to say that most of our costs are labor costs and therefore the salaries and wages that we pay are really an ongoing recurring type of expenditures that we incur. The other element that we need to consider being in the Bay Area, obviously, are potential for disasters there and obviously the one that comes closest to mine is potential of a severe earthquake. And lastly, we touched upon it earlier in terms of the state takeaway for redevelopment agency funds, what is our relationship with the state who have certain abilities to potentially take monies from local agencies? So that's always a concern for us as an agency and any other agency as they think about developing a reserve policy. So in looking at a general fund reserve policy, we looked up, for instance, GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association. And they actually have a recommendation as part of their best practices. And that is to say that their recommendation is that agencies keep a minimum of two months of either annual revenues or annual expenditures. We happen to pick annual expenditures because they're more constant, certainly given especially where we are in terms of what happened with the recession, with the cyclical nature of revenues, that those being sensitive to economic conditions, whereas expenditures are more predictable. So from our perspective, using expenditures as the base for the calculation would be appropriate. And from our perspective, staff is recommending that we adopt the same recommendation that is given by the GFPA. That is to say, again, two months of expenditures as the minimum level for the general fund reserve. That two months works out in terms of percentages, sixteen and two-thirds percent. So the recommendation for staff is that we adopt the policy of reserving the sixteen points, sixteen and two-thirds percent of our general fund expenditures for the general fund reserve. Next, we want to talk about the reserve for equipment replacement, sorry.
Is there a dollar, do you have a dollar amount for that, just for comparison reasons?
Yes, so, yes. The general fund reserve currently has a balance of about $5.585 million. Mathematically, if we take the general fund expenditures, do the calculation, it works out to be about $5.246 million. So we're a little bit above that minimum that we're recommending, about $300,000 and change above that level for the general fund reserve.
Okay.
So in looking at the other reserve, that is the capital equipment reserve, the background on that was that this was actually for the purpose of providing replacements of our capital assets, that being our equipments. And monies have been added to the fund really as part of the general fund budgeting process. Every year, we charge specific departments based on the assets they own into this equipment reserve with the goal of having those funds available as these assets hit their end of life cycle or potentially if there's obsolescence, there's monies there, they're available to replace these funds. And over the course of, you know, these years in which we've accumulated these money, we're projecting that by the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have $5.4 million as a balance in the equipment replacement reserve fund. In looking at what is an appropriate level for this particular reserve fund, we looked at what the value of our assets are. What is the cost of all these equipments that we own at the city? And doing that analysis, we identified that there's $8.2 million of value sitting in our books, if I may, sitting in the city. And we think that, given where the reserve level is and the value of these assets, the funding level is about 65 percent. You know, mathematically calculating that, it works out to be 65 percent. So we think that a 50 percent level would be sufficient to meet our needs. What that 50 percent level obviously is telling us is that practically every two years, you know, we have, we are able to replace these assets. I mean, you know, if we have assets of a million dollars and we have, you know, for our hypothetical example, and we have $500,000, obviously we can replace, on average, about half of those assets on any given year. So with that thought in mind, staff is recommending that we set a level for the equipment replacement reserve to this 53 percent level and we believe that this is, you know, sufficient to meet the needs, the ongoing needs of the city in terms of replacing its assets and still be able to have the funding necessary as working capital and as a reserve to meet those requirements. So with that said, with city council's consideration, if this is, if this recommendation is something that city council feels comfortable with, then we would incorporate this as part of the budget document that will be presented to you in June and so that this policy becomes really a component of that budget adoption process.
To the city manager, so what you said, Ed, is that we have, all things being equal, if you cut it off today, about $300,000 more than what the policy you're recommending has in the general fund.
That is correct.
And about $1.3 million more in the equipment reserve.
That is correct.
So what happens with that, just gets drawn down until we reach those levels that we've agreed on or?
I would not recommend that your policy allow only for the maintenance of a minimum balance, particularly in the general fund reserve. As the finance director has outlined and maybe did not absolutely emphasize, is that the policy parameter would be for the maintenance of a minimum balance at sixteen and two-thirds percent of general fund operating expenditures. The amount that you identify as a cushion, $300,000 or so, is a very minimal amount above the minimum and I would certainly not recommend that the city council consider simply utilizing that money just because it exists. You would certainly strive to have a reserve balance that would exceed the minimum at all times and one which would provide the necessary level of comfort for the city council based, as some of the materials attached to the staff report identify, that really your assessment of what amount constitutes the necessary level of reserves at any given time is really as much a level of comfort and understanding of your own risk tolerance and preference and priority for this individual city. We're recommending the sixteen and two-thirds percent where the availability of two months worth of resources as a minimum balance. And I would say that we would not be seeking to engage a discussion about how to utilize excess reserve funds until and unless you had a substantial exceedance of that amount of several hundred thousand dollars more than what you have. Conversely, if the city council felt that it was prudent and that expenditures were necessary in that amount above the floor, if you will, you have that little bit of cushion or opportunity to address one-time expenditures, other operating contingencies, and you do have a little bit of flexibility. I hope that answers the question.
Oh yeah, I wasn't going to get into any discussion how to spend excess money, but there's other entities around that very well might, you know, so I just wanted brought up because I, you know, think as a minimum, sixteen point something percent as a minimum is a minimum. This risk-taking stuff, I get very conservative with playing around with that in our environment now and it's too dangerous to keep small amounts of funds there just as a balance and keep your fingers crossed. I'd much rather have a cushion.
If I might, I would make some additional comments regarding the equipment reserve. And as the finance director has indicated, there is a recommendation for your consideration that would set the minimum balance in the equipment reserve at an amount which is substantially less than the amount that is currently identified as a balance in the fund. As the city council is aware, there is approximately $3 million of a receivable that is comprising a portion of that existing fund balance. That receivable is from the redevelopment agency and was utilized as the startup costs for the agency over a number of years when it was immediately after its formation. The comments regarding the general fund notwithstanding, I would say that the annual deposits into the equipment reserve, the expenditure history and the asset value being protected by the equipment reserve or the equipment replacement fund, it does indicate that it may be an opportunity to consider adjustment of the transfers in on an annual or a continuing basis or, and/or, as we've discussed and as you're going to hear in just a moment, strategic use of that receivable to offset general fund operating budget or other considerations. So again, those are opportunities. They are not, I think you need to have a level of comfort with your policy with respect to reserves and the situation of each of these, both the fund balance as well as the need for reservation of funds, is there are some differences between these two resources.
Can you also explain, and that's very clear for the growth of the capital reserve, the equipment reserve, can you explain the potential growth of the general fund reserve and how does that grow or is it flat, is it stagnant right now?
Typically, historically, the city has grown the general fund reserve with the deposit of otherwise undesignedated, generally unanticipated, one-time resources, unbudgeted, unanticipated, undesignedated resources. And as the council, I believe, is aware, the general fund reserve has grown from virtually nothing about 10 years ago to a position of relative health over the past decade, essentially with that strategy. That would generally continue to be the approach that staff would envision utilizing unless the city council provided alternative direction.
To the chair.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
My first question is going to be, do you believe if this recommendation were to go forward on the equipment reserve specifically, would staff have a thought or view of utilizing some of that for the shortfall in the 210, 211 budget? Or is that a thought that's come across someone's mind?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and answer that question because in view of the finance director's limited exposure to our previous conversations and to our having jumped in at the middle, the middle of the stream with our budget preparation process, the answer to that question is yes. The staff has previously discussed with the city council that note receivable from the redevelopment agency and the potential of utilizing some amount of resources on a repayment basis from the redevelopment agency as one of several strategies to address the current year and next year's general fund operating budget shortfall.
You know, going to the general reserve, we want to, staff wants to recommend a 5.246 or 16 three-fourths. You know, the director talked about a concern of an earthquake. I want to talk about a concern of a mudslide, like what I went down the hill with the public works director at Madison. Doesn't take much for that to be gone. To me, this is the emergency. This is what we have in the savings account to address disasters or as staff will call it, the one-time since we were short in this last budget cycle. And I'm going to say it again, one time here, one time there, to me, becomes one time everywhere. Okay? So I don't know that that's enough. I would really be interested to see the other cities within our county that have a policy. I'd like to see what their percentage, what they're set at. I would like to see exactly what's in their reserve account. And let's have a comparison. Let's go apples to apples here. I like those type of reports rather than this third-party recommendation. I want to see it firsthand from our neighboring communities and within this county, what they're doing. Maybe we'll find this is a great process and this is what everybody has adopted. You know, I understand on the equipment reserve, because that would give about a 1.3 million, I think the director said, that's a lot of money. But if I'm not mistaken, we've stopped accruing for the equipment reserve. We've either limited it or we've stopped accruing.
That is actually not correct.
So the departments have, when we would have so much be accrued for the equipment reserve, we have never reduced the amount that's gone into that account?
Each year, the asset, the required contribution is calculated based on the useful life and the value of the assets reserved. I believe that there was one year in which, as a budget strategy, we reduced the transfer in in consideration of the overall health of the reserve fund and the, or the equipment replacement fund and the limited, or at that point, no need to further increase the fund. However, it is, it is continuing practice of the city to charge each of the departments, the current year's budget and next year's budget as it's being developed, include a transfer in to the equipment reserve.
Okay, so it's never been stopped, it may have been lessened at a point.
At one point it was, yes.
Okay, and I know we've also tried to stretch the length of a vehicle, trying to make sure we can get the extra gear out of it, the extra 10,000, 20,000 miles or what have you. I just, and I understand there's all accounting to everything, but you know, when you accrue less at one time or another, when we do the length of the equipment and we see that out, I just get concerned that, you know, eventually things come up to get you in the end. You know, you only could put something off so long and all of a sudden, we don't just need one, we need several because we have waited and we've tried to do our due diligence. I can tell you, reserves is a subject for myself that I have a great deal of concern. I have a concern that we would be looking at reserves in order to balance a budget coming up. And I don't think that's how you start out to balance your budget in 210, 211. In my world, however you want to differentiate them, but using savings in order to balance your annual expenditures out of your house, that's not the way to plan a budget in my mind. I think we have to look at the reality of what it is, if this is one of the objectives. I understand it's a mechanism, but I do understand that this is not, to me, not the best avenue to go down to explore a million, we'll say, from the equipment in order to put it to the fund, the general fund, in order to balance a budget, if that's somewhat of the intent. So I do have some concerns on this practice.
To the chair, I just want to comment on that. I think, I think a few of us were on this council and we didn't have a reserve and I think, I don't think we had a major concern at that point. I think we had things in place and that, and we were more concerned about the growth and improvement of the community and master plans and things and as it came, you know, these reserves grew. But I believe that we should have, you know, in this time and eight years of budget cutting and things, that we have to know where we stand in every, in every asset, in every account. And I'm not saying, I would not go forward and say, let's, you know, sit at the bare minimum, at the minimum on these accounts and then use that money towards balancing a budget, but I think it's something that we should consider. I feel very strongly that if having to decide on a percentage of the reserve versus an employee, I might lean towards a reserve, so.
And I agree with you, council member.
That's what I feel. I don't have any preconceived notions to what to use with this money, whether it's 1.3 million or whether it's a quarter of a million.
Okay. May I clarify?
Michael. To the chair. Couple of thoughts. The supporting documentation that was provided to us did state that two months is minimum, that the recommendation is that that be the absolute minimum, but I'm a little uncomfortable with the fact that we're recommending the minimum, but there's not a lot of substance behind why the minimum would be appropriate in our case. And what I was hoping to see was maybe a little bit more analysis in terms of, say, we experienced a disaster in the area, what would the city be responsible for? I know that there's insurance on some properties that the city owns, but you know, what would the city be responsible for in terms of repair? Would we incur large expenses in repairing streets, damage to private property? I don't know what that exposure is. And you know, the two months is better than having no guidelines at all, but I think I'd be a lot more comfortable if we were to have some real numbers that say, here is a scenario and here is what we could be on the hook for. Also in terms of possible lawsuits that come up, I know that's something else that we would probably have, we're not budgeting for that. So at least theoretically, what could our exposure be in a situation like that versus just going with the minimum? Regarding the equipment reserves, the supporting information said that lifespan of equipment is roughly five to 10 years. So looking at that, I mean, if we were to replace everything every five years, 20 percent a year, I think would get you into that thing. I don't know, I don't know if 50 percent is high or low. It almost seems, I don't know, it's definitely been growing, there was enough there to loan some out, so maybe that number is high. My, I guess first a question is what equipment is included in that and is there a potential to add either equipment that's not currently considered or possibly improvements to our equipment and plants that we could include in that reserve that isn't currently included? And by that, I would, you know, improvements to city hall, maybe some upgrades to our parks that wouldn't normally be budgeted but could possibly be accounted for in there. Not necessarily capital improvement projects, but things that might be more maintenance that we could take advantage of, doing upgrades in that. So that's something I'd want to see considered before we agree to bringing that amount down.
An example?
I don't know, say, you know, first, I know there's a lot, a lot of our facilities are really old and in generally, I mean, when we talk about fixing one of our, one of our buildings, that's a capital project, but I'm wondering if there weren't some opportunity to incrementally fix some things in there that we could account for as, I don't know, more maintenance rather than capital projects, if we were to actually put money aside to do those things. I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense, but. And the other comment I had was just in terms of the enforceability of having this policy in place. I mean, I don't know how rigid of a rule this would be. I think the language in there was kind of, we would strongly recommend not doing this, but I don't know if we would want to do something a little bit more firm that, you know, that it won't happen. you know, that, that it won't happen unless certain conditions are met. And then the conditions that were also outlined in the policy seemed a little bit too general, maybe a little vague, so we could maybe put a little bit more language around what conditions would have to be met in order for that to, in order for the reserves to, to be used. I think that might also be useful.
Couple of questions and comments. First of all, I agree with just about everything that's been said. I feel that two months is, is too conservative for me. When you say you figure the worth of what we have, is that to replace?
No, that's at the cost, the purchase cost, so yes, your, your point is well taken. The replacement cost may be different than the...
Maybe quite a bit different.
Yes.
Right.
So that therefore, the 50% is really the cushion that we're kind of building, building into the reserve policy to provide for the fact that there's going to be some inflationary component of replacing these assets.
Okay. I would also like to see a better, I understand the GFOA, you know, independent, and they do their thing, and it might be a blanket, but it certainly doesn't cover everybody. I'd like to see more of a contemporary comparison of, as the Vice Mayor said, our, our neighbors, neighboring communities that, of a, of a similar, maybe geographical nature, those kinds of things. Because I was on this council when we ended up spending millions on slides and buying homes and relocating people because we weren't covered and we had to spend a ton of money, and it just goes out the door in a second. So I just think a two-month, you know, reserve policy at a minimum is, is just not enough.
Yeah. Finally, I'm just going to say I'm, I'm one who would wish and think that we should be more frugal and put, I would love to see us at the end of a budget time, say, you know what, we not only just balanced, we came out in the black. Because maybe we, we said the revenues were going to be here, but they became here, and that's a good thing. But I don't want us to rely on reserves as a way to balance the budget. I don't want it to be utilized or looked at, whether it's by staff, or bargaining units, or by the general public to say, but you've got the money there. According to your own policy, you've got a million dollars that pays for it. That's not the way, in my world, to prepare a budget. Let's talk the reality of what we have, what expenditures we have. If we're short, we're short, and let's say how much. But that's the way I'd like to see us go out of budget, and I'm just concerned that this tool or policy could be utilized by others to show that, based on your own policy, you have extra reserves, so put those toward that. And again, you keep doing that, and keep doing that, and there will come a time, maybe not while I'm up here. But I think, as, as the Mayor indicated, there was a time he sat up here, and the money wasn't there. And that, to me, I don't want to sit up here and have that time come.
So to staff, what do you need from us now? Do you have some direction?
Let me suggest what we heard and what you would like us to come back with, and I guess what I would reiterate is, we weren't asking for any type of action tonight. Our approach would be to return to the City Council with a draft policy for your final review and approval in conjunction with the budget presentation process. So we have some time in between to check back in with you. And what I heard you say that you'd like to see as additional information, first is what other cities in the county, in San Mateo County, have reserve policies, and if so, what do those policies, what are those policies? Secondly, related to comparison with other cities in the county, you're interested in their reserve balances. And we have some of that information, we, we will certainly update that and present that to you. You also asked for some, I'm going to say, some examples or some assessment of the types of particularly disaster-related risk that the city might be exposed to. I would suggest that we can give you some example scenarios, one perhaps from our own experience of the slide losses that turned out not to be covered by insurance or FEMA as we had anticipated. So we, perhaps we can develop some generic types of examples. I think the range of those examples might actually be unlimited, but we can, we can certainly bring you back some information on that. Next, you asked for information, a list of the assets that are reserved in the equipment reserve, in the equipment replacement fund, and consideration, and I would suggest some information about what would be involved in including additional capital items, as an example, in the reserve or the replacement program. So those are the things that I heard that you wanted back as specific information. My suggestion is that we bring that back to you end of May time period, in order that you have that information and can engage in additional discussion prior to consideration of a policy, and we'll, we'll be prepared to discuss that with you again.
Can you have a comment?
If I can add to that, and I know we didn't hear from the city attorney, but if there is, if there's a section of that, or if there's a dialogue in that, in this litigious society that we should probably have, you know, a percentage as far as for litigation...
Litigation.
...to make her feel comfortable.
Also, regarding the budget that is coming up, and what we have done in past sessions is set some dates, so we can have some study sessions prior to, you know, voting on the budget. So I'd like to suggest, what we've done before is three dates, usually gets done in two, and the third is kind of a backup. So I have a suggestion of June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, or the 7th, 9th, and 10th. Maybe you could look on your calendars and see if that would work for you.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to jump on this one, because I know, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd is most appropriate for me.
Okay.
I will not be able to attend on, I will not be able to attend on the 7th, on the 9th. Yeah.
I think I'm okay with that.
I'm okay for 1st, 2nd, and 3rd.
Rico?
As it stands right this moment, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd would work.
Okay. 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of June.
June, I'm sorry.
Is that the council's preference at this point? 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, would you like us to check back with you?
Well, you might want to check with Irene.
Well, good idea. We'll confirm that with you at the next meeting.
Oh, she's gone, though. We, we, she's gone.
We confirm for her?
We confirm for her.
Okay. We, we will bring that back as an action item at your next meeting, so both for your scheduling convenience, as well as for public information.
Yeah, great. Item E, we pulled, it will be presented on the next, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We've, we've, we've kind of consolidated an additional important item into this agenda topic, and I'd like to move on to part two, if, if you would entertain that. This part of the presentation is intended to give you an update, as the council previously This part of the presentation gives you an update on the budget development process. As the City Council will recall, we've already discussed the preparation of the 10-11 budget on a couple of previous occasions with the City Council. Most notably, at your February 10th and February 26th meetings, we advised you of the mid-year financial status. We discussed with you strategies to address the current year budget. And we gave you projections for the revenue situation, as we then anticipated it going into 10-11, what, what we anticipated in the way of revenues for the coming year. And in summary, the status of the current year's budget required an adjustment of 1.3 million dollars in order that we could reasonably project that we would end the current year with a balanced budget. As the Finance Director reported to you tonight, based on the third quarter results and the amendments that the City Council has now made to the current year's budget, we do anticipate ending the current 9-10 fiscal year in balance, as it relates to the amended budget and based on the previously adopted budget deficit elimination strategies approved by the City I'm also pleased, relatively pleased, to report to you tonight that our projections presented to you in the previous meetings in February remain on track in terms of our anticipated revenue situation for fiscal year 10-11. I will remind the City Council that that was actually not the case, as we worked last year at this time to prepare the current year's budget. And in fact, having had a very similar situation of startling midterm results requiring adjustment mid-year last year, we projected a revenue situation going into fiscal year 9-10 that then again needed to be adjusted downward in April of 2009, as we moved closer and closer towards presentation of a preliminary budget for your consideration. Again, I'm relatively pleased, compared to a situation that might have existed, to report to you tonight, that we have not, during the ensuing time period, as we've progressed on developing the budget for 10-11, we have not identified a similar situation. In other words, our projections remain as best we can anticipate on track with what we told you in February. In summary, we are anticipating a relatively flat revenue situation going into 9, going into 10-11 as compared to the amended budget for 9-10. And what you see on the slide in front of you is, and we're calling the 10-11 working budget, it's essentially pre-preliminary budget, because I don't want you to try and pick this up and compare it to the budget that you'll get in late May for your consideration in June, because we're really not yet done with it. But based on our progress to date, our major revenue categories remain relatively flat. There is an anticipated slight improvement over the current year in sales tax, although in general terms, that, that really nets out against additional declines in other revenues. But overall, our revenue situation remains as we previously reported it to you, with no major changes overall. There are, there continue to be a number of issues and some assumptions that have been built into our projection of expenditures for the coming year. Most particularly, as the council is aware, we have contractual obligations related to personnel costs, in particular, the PERS rate, which is going up by a modest amount this year, but also contractual obligations to merit-related increases for personnel. As the council is aware, no other, across the board, salary increases were provided this year, and our assumption remains the same, as we have projected expenditures for the next year's budget. We are anticipating continuation of all existing personnel expenditure containment and reduction strategies that were incorporated into the current year budget, most particularly the continuation of a furlough currently at the level of six days annual, or representing a 2.3% reduction in salary for personnel. The, in addition, our budget is built around an assumption of no increase in the premium cost for medical, and we've showed you the amounts of, of the costs associated, were those items not to be successfully negotiated with our bargaining units, and as the council is aware, both of those items are subject to the negotiations process, and all six of our bargaining units have contracts which have either recently expired, or which will expire on June 30th. So that remains an issue somewhat unknown, but I think we've been very clear, both with our labor representatives and as well as with our employee base generally, that the budget assumptions and the ability to balance the budget and, and maintain a reasonable level of service relies absolutely on these cost containment strategies continuing. Next, the budget, an additional item that has been built into the budget is continuation of a scrutiny to all line items, and in fact, a reduction of approximately $150,000 in line item expenditures as compared to the current year budget. So that exercise, or that diligence has been exercised in producing the expenditure side of the budget for fiscal year 10-11. I'm sorry that I've gotten the slides just a little bit out of order, so I beg your indulgence in our jumping around just a little bit. In summary, the fiscal situation impacting or defining next year's budget, as it is currently situated, continues, as I indicated to you before, the same basic parameters of the amount of the deficit, and I'm going to repeat, in some aspects, information that you've heard before, about the strategies that we are anticipating being utilized in balancing the budget. First, as you see, there is an approximate $2 million deficit, if you will. That amount is comparable to the situation in the current year, as I mentioned before, in that there were one-time resources used to balance the current year budget straight from the get-go, and there was an additional 1.3 million dollars of changes that occurred mid-year. Those two amounts add to a total of $2 million, and that $2 million deficit number continues to next year. We have previously presented to you a program, a preliminary program of personnel reductions equating to seven and a half additional positions being eliminated at the total value of approximately $760,000. We are continuing to propose, as we have discussed with the City Council previously, the use of redevelopment agency payback, currently due to the equipment reserve or the equipment replacement fund of $400,000, and the excess ERAF amount that we have been receiving for the past several years, when property taxes are reconciled by the county tax collector, of $500,000. This year, that same amount, $500,000 of excess ERAF funds were utilized to balance the budget, and in fact, the total amount of the excess ERAF collections was just over $700,000. So that amount is, again, an estimate of the amount that we would expect to receive, but is a, I would say, a reasonably conservative estimate. In summary, then, what you see at the bottom of the page is about $370,000, $378,000 of additional changes, reductions to the budget that need to be incorporated. And as I have indicated to you previously, it is my expectation that that change needs to come out of personnel expenditures, and I will come back to that in just a moment. In summary, what we are proposing is a budget that is utilizing these three basic strategies... In summary, what we are proposing is a budget that is utilizing these three basic strategies to balance the budget. Additional expenditure reductions, additional permanent expenditure reductions, continued the practice of the current year for a repayment amount from the redevelopment agency loan to the equipment replacement fund, and the use of excess ERAF. When we last discussed the budget preparation with the city council in March, our specific agenda item was to brief you on preliminary personnel reductions that would be incorporated in the budget. And my primary purpose tonight is just to revisit those with you and to, again, refresh your memory regarding the anticipated service impacts, which are on the next couple of slides, and we'll review those very briefly. The total amount of savings from the permanent elimination of the seven and a half positions is $763,000. Again, there is a fairly lengthy list of projected service impacts, which we've, we've provided for your information and consideration about the, what the public will see and what services are likely not to be able to be performed going forward and/or would require some restructuring or reduction in the frequency or the timeliness of the service. The, in summary, at the current time, our working budget projects $31.3 million in expenditures. And, if I could go to the next slide. The proposal, in addition to the personnel reductions that have already been discussed with the council and those which will be necessary to balance the remaining $370,000 of shortfall, in addition to that, the, I provided you a summary of the net effect of a $400,000 redevelopment agency loan repayment and the resulting impact to the city's equipment replacement fund. As you can see, the, and as we've just discussed with you a moment ago, the total note receivable and cash balance leave a total equipment reserve fund balance of just over $5.8 million. There is a scheduled and budgeted transfer in for 9-10 of $424,000 and proposed equipment purchases of $549,000. The proposed loan repayment and transfer of that amount into the general fund operating budget of $400,000 would leave, as of July 1st, an approximate equipment reserve fund balance of $5.3 million, including the remaining note receivable. As I indicated, personnel reductions are the necessary result of our meeting your specific direction to deliver a balanced budget. Personnel, as the city council is well aware, represents approximately 70% of our general fund operating budget expenditures. And I wanted to summarize for you, primarily in order to gain any direction or comment that the city council might have, summarize for you the areas and the impact, if you will, of the additional personnel reductions that will need to be made in fiscal year 10-11. As the council is aware, we currently employ 167 and a half, approximately 168 employees that are funded at least in part through the general fund. That includes our elected officials yourselves, as well as the elected treasurer and city clerk. Of those positions, roughly 20 full-time equivalents, and these are pieces of many different positions, but full-time equivalent of 20 positions are funded by allocations from the enterprise funds for, and those positions are primarily in our general administrative areas of the city, our finance, city manager, city attorney, HR operations. That represents a, a revenue into the general fund to support roughly 20 full-time equivalent positions. During our previous discussions, the city council has expressed an interest in a priority for the maintenance of frontline public safety response and prevention activities, taking only the first-line, frontline responders, and this is primarily limited to our sworn safety staff in both the fire and the police departments at 84 and a half positions, netting out those, the, those that are, what is funded by allocations from the enterprise funds and frontline sworn safety positions. We end up with 63 general fund positions over which at least the majority, if not virtually all of the position eliminations, will occur. As council is aware, that includes the broad range of services from parks maintenance, recreation services, community development services, as well as, of course, our safety operations. 63 positions now have, will be eliminate, will be reducing by seven and a half positions, and I'm anticipating, in order to meet the revenue shortfall and in order to balance the budget, I'm anticipating an additional three to four positions will need to be eliminated, those positions, because I've exhausted my opportunity to utilize vacant positions or It will be necessary at this point to move to layoff of approximately three to four positions for a total elimination of 10 to 11 positions in, affecting fiscal year 10-11 to be implemented within the next two months and available then to give the full opportunity to, for those costs to be reduced out of the budget and to be, allow us to present you a balanced budget for your approval prior to June 30th. So that concludes my report. The finance director and I remain available for any questions.
Any questions? I won't say thank you, but it's not pretty, not pretty at all. Okay, we pulled item E, we have the next council meeting.